Like the national network.
So the next one.
Reindeer names.
It's not like we're going off the NASA time. Not Lane Thompson time.
Then it's me.
That's not NASA time. Yes, yes, why?
Borough council meeting of September fifth twenty twenty-three, the regular session will come to order. We will start with the budgetable meetings.
Welcome to the citizens stood by the United States of America into the Republic of which stands one nation under God. We did this for the delivery of justice as well.
Move call please.
President Miller.
Here.
Vice President Anthony.
Here.
Councilwoman Igerman.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Booker.
Here.
Councilwoman Garrett.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Neil.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Commissioner Cravis.
Here.
And Mira Golkey.
Here.
Chief Myers.
Here.
Chief Nett.
Here.
Manager Thompson.
Here.
Superhead of Key.
Here.
You have one.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any items to add or remove from the consent agenda or regular agenda?
Sir President, uh, there's one line that I'd like to add some language they dropped off. It's about the one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh line on the consent agenda approval of twenty twenty-four pension plan investment. Um, two numbers dropped off the end of there. It should read the amount of three hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars, comma, two hundred and six thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars, comma, and fourteen thousand, two hundred dollars. And that's for the three different plans all covered that we need to make MMO decision on.
Okay. Any other additions for the consent agenda or regular agenda? Hearing none, are there any amendments or changes to the proposed minutes? Or not, is there a motion for approval of the agenda with the addition as specified by management?
I'll make that.
Vice President Anthony moves.
I'll second that.
Councilwoman Agarjun seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And the agenda is approved. Now I have the pleasure of presenting a resolution passed by council to Tony Brown. If you both, uh, come forward and Tiffany, I have, uh, Councilwoman Martin.
Thank you for giving the time for the retirement and coming out for the first council meeting and in a sense, it's very, very, very. Resolution zero four dash point three, whereas the citizen means in the acceptance of the borough council coming on campus, the mayor. Desired here with the last, my initial and congratulations to Tony Brown. Bonjour, Father, from the council area board of the recreation office, where she orchestrated the recreational programs for the borough and the other communities within the borough of the borough's public. Whereas, it's set on the borough recreation board, so she supports, learns when there are secure funds for the borough's community health. Recreation of the film project. And whereas, the borough officials and community recognize the focus dedicated service to the borough of the council area. A faithful service to the thirty-three years, with a fine world standard and outstanding loyalty to the power of the community. And now, their boards did resolve the borough council and the district of the council of borough, someone has something on the board. By the fourth, it's been a three-year process to the city of our contact later and how it.
Congratulations and thank you. Do you have any words, do you have any words of wisdom for us?
I'll make it very short. Um, first of all, I'd like to really thank, um, the borough council, just to look nice and honor the two people of the borough. People of the city, I ask that everything, they state to me. I'm retiring, but most importantly, I really would like to thank all the leaders of the community of the last four years. Um, that allowed me to be part of the recreation board. One of the most priceless things, from that same thing is the changes that were on the record is relationships have played a role with all of these different boards, communities. Um, as well as the grants that were written with the line out, the borough is looking at these. Um, he's been able to spread in the accident during the process that he was to the grant. As we came for the part right now, I'll have problems driving through that because everything that's happening and everyone's back to that. He's got property in my life, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any citizen, oh, first of all, is there any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. President, uh. Tonight I have the honor of entering into correspondence a letter received by council, uh, from Mr. David Brown, four twenty-five West Keller Street. And I'd like to read the letter so that it be entered into the record. Let it be known that on this date, the following communication was read aloud at Borough Council and entered into the public record, record forever to be contained in the official Borough Council minutes. We moved into Mechanicsburg in nineteen eighty-five. Charlie Sheriff and his devoted wife Carol were first to greet us. Despite debilitating health issues over the years, Charlie never focuses on those concerns. Instead, he, he keeps his attention on the concerns of his neighbors. Often sitting on his front porch, he greets each passerby, usually by name. The invitation to join him on the porch for a chat is always there. You can expect a friendly phone call if he hasn't seen you in a few days, just checking to see if everything is okay. When a neighborhood family's home was damaged by fire, Charlie started a fundraising effort to help them get back on their feet. Without a doubt, he is the best neighbor anyone could ask for. He's an outstanding citizen, a wise and compassionate man, and an unofficial goodwill ambassador for the neighborhood and the borough of Mechanicsburg. Submitted to council by Mr. David Brown, four twenty-five West Keller Street, accepted into the record by Kyle Miller, council president.
Thank you, Manager Thompson. I would also like to per, uh, personally add that I have experienced the friendly nature of Charlie's porch and have had conversations with him. And we thank him for his, making Mechanicsburg a good place to live by being a good neighbor. And I think it's a wonderful thing to have a neighbor that would express their gratitude and thanks for years of friendship and just having a good neighbor. With that, we'll enter that into the record and thank you. Moving on to citizens comment, is there any citizens comment to see? Hearing none, moving on to the consent agenda. Any, um, is there a motion for approval of the items on the consent agenda? Councilman Booker makes some motions. There are second?
Council second.
Councilwoman Agarjun seconds, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
I would, I would say just with the, uh, the numbers added to that.
Yes, as the, as the agenda will admit.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda, uh, the consent agenda items are approved. Moving on to the regular agenda, uh, finance administration and ordinance, Vice President Anthony.
Uh, nothing except to say that we have established a budget schedule. I believe the first meeting, the next quarterly meeting is the eighteenth. And then after that, we'll be pushing through. So, uh, keep your eyes on the agenda. I love what you're doing with the agenda meeting, uh, dates on the bottom. Thank you.
Christopher President, I'd just like to add that, uh, I would like to commend Chairman Anthony for his leadership in the finance committee and also the Borough Council, our Borough Manager, uh, Thompson. It was a fantastic meeting, as you well know, also, you know, the finance committee, and I think our treasurer should be commended as well for her hard work. But it's just been, uh, been a completely different experience and we are really heading in a positive direction. So thank you very much.
Just one, community outreach, Councilman O'Neil.
Uh, Vice President Anthony, anything from the school board? This school has just opened.
Uh, no.
Nothing from the library either. Uh, Manager Thompson, we have an item, uh, to discuss the approval of social media policy. Would you leave us with that?
Yes, I'm sorry. Can we have a motion for approval of the social media policy as presented by Manager Thompson?
Absolutely.
Vice President Anthony moves, there are second. Councilman O'Neil seconds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I provided a draft of the, uh, social media, uh, policy, color policy, a directive, a, um, action memo. Uh, the intent is, uh, kind of threefold. Uh, the first, uh, part of the intent is to ensure that it's clear who approves the content that goes on to our social media. That being, uh, the, um, office administrator or the borough manager. We review between Sarah and I, everything that goes on there before it goes. Uh, and we also review all the alterations. The, uh, second part of the intent is to, uh, establish the purpose of our social media platforms. And though the purpose of, from this policy memo is to state clearly that it is for broadcast communications and not expressly meant for any discussion. Uh, really, that's because we don't have the ability to engage in that discussion, either from a manpower, a content, or really from a, um, you know, from a political debate perspective, uh, being staff members. And so we often feel like, uh, we, we get a lot of questions about why are we not responding on social media when we're asked questions? So we wanted to formalize the, uh, the policy internally that our, our social media platforms are for broadcast communications to inform the public and not for discussion. The, uh, last part is more clarifies discussion groups and comments, and it talks about how, um, uh, we're going to take steps to remove the discussion of areas and forums from our social media sites and really providing that the same content out. It's just that in order to discuss it, folks, we'll, we'll have to move that content to another site to go and discuss it.
Any questions?
I have a question. Um, I, I really like this, this is well done. But who establishes the social media platforms, for example, if we were to add Twitter, if we don't have that, or X, whatever it's about now? Um, is that necessary to include in here, or is that just a function that already exists?
Yeah, I, I kind of wanted to write it as, you know, we did list out some of the commonly used ones, but, um, we are asking our social media coordinator to, to kind of, uh, look forward at new platforms as they come out and assess them. Uh, and I think that before we, we go on anything new, uh, we really need to come back here and refresh. Uh, just to make sure that we're not overextending ourselves or getting into an area where, um, uh, it could put the borough into a, into a bad position regarding communications.
Good luck. I would just say, I mean, I think that's smart, especially considering like, where are we putting our effort into? There's, there's a juice worth to squeeze, like, if all of our, and the majority of our constituents in the borough are on Facebook, then that makes sense to be on there, sort of thing.
Yeah, question?
I have one, I have one just popped into my head, um, after our discussion today. So just a quick question. Does this cover the borough itself or and the police department or just the borough?
This is just for the borough, um, and we're happy to share best practices of the police department, but this policy memo is just for the borough.
Uh, would the police department mirror the borough's policy?
I don't think we allow colleagues to. Think, I, I tend to have the.
Is there, and I know I'll sound ignorant, but I'm gonna ask a question anyway, but is there any particular reason why they would be two separate?
Policies? I think, uh, they have, the police department has not just borough policy and rules, uh, they also have some state and federal privacy laws to, uh, to contend with. So I think having a separate policy makes sense and then using best practices across makes sense as well.
Does it make sense to com- to combine the effort into a single staff person or department? Or does it make sense for each entity to manage their own social media?
I think at this point, it still makes sense to manage it separately, only because it's, uh, two distinctly different, uh, missions with different workflows. That requires, in the case of the police department, as far as I know, of a certain subject matter expertise that we don't have on the staff about what, what and when uh, things should be published on, on their social media. I believe that you need to understand criminal law and police procedure to understand how to operate their social media.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pressure passes. Do any, any other items on this?
May I, may I ask a follow-up question? I know the choice has already been voted on. Mr. Manager, uh, just, do you envision this applying to all departments within the borough other than the police department?
Yes, police, other than police and, um, fire, fire department having its own separate.
Well, there are separate.
Issue, yes.
So we understand that. What about the recreation, the rec board? We have two of them, right? The borough and the.
Right, and the one that's under the school district is certainly would not apply to.
But the borough, you're thinking it would?
Yes.
Uh, moving on, community and economic development, Councilman Garrett.
Thank you. The manager again.
Yes, uh, so I do have an update on the Chamber of Commerce lease. Uh, since la- we last met, uh, we've been in contact with, I think we, we updated the council last time that, uh, the Chamber of Commerce came back and asked if we would be interested in selling them the land rather than leasing it to them. Uh, and then I took the task to follow up with Solicitor on, um, options for both, um, for both how to move forward with lease discussions and then also options on the sale. Um, the feedback I have from Sister Cassidy is that because there is no formal lease, under the, uh, Pennsylvania law, uh, we treat it like it's a thirty-day lease arrangement where, um, if we wanted to take a, if we wanted to increase or escalate the, um, pressure, uh, our next move would be to, uh, uh, potentially give them a thirty-day notice of eviction and then it would have to be out in thirty days. But then, um, given that, I also went and looked into the, um, sale process, how that would work, including the property value. Um, and then how the subdivision process would need to work, uh, because the property that that, uh, that the chamber is on includes a substantial, about half of the public parking, uh, slab this next to them to the west. And, uh, we would certainly want to go through the subdivision process to, to draw that, that piece of property down to just what they need for that, uh, railcar in their office. Um, the listed, um, the listed value, uh, from, um, tax records is fifty-four thousand, two hundred. That's for the whole parcel. Whole parcel, um, and really, either the chamber or, or, or we, the borough, would need to try to figure out exactly what sort of, um, uh, what sort of subdivision we would want for that piece of land. I think it's about a third of it. We would need to obviously have a survey done and then run through the, um, zoning hearing board process to divide the land. Someone would have to pay for those, those processes as well. But then, um, right now, about a third of fifty-four-two is about eighteen and change, and then probably another three or four thousand dollars in fees to get the process done.
Did you check with Solicitor about the need to open this up for bidding if a piece of property is going to be sold?
I did not, I, that.
So I don't know the accuracy of it, but in the past, when this issue's come up and I've been involved in it, there's been the representation that the borough had to open up to a bidding process. Um, I'm not sure if that's accurate or not, but that might be something to look into. I'm sure this is a matter, the sale would be a matter, I think the Borough Council would want to consider it in close, that executive session, uh, sale of real estate.
The sale of real estate is not an appropriate, um, it's not appropriate to have an executive session for the sale of real estate, the acquisition of real estate. We are, although we can receive the advice of attorney, we can receive legal advice in executive session.
What is the market value of the land in question on a lease or rental basis for a month or per year?
On a lease basis, it was between five hundred and twelve fifty.
That's pretty broad. Can you narrow that down for a little bit?
Uh, it's tough because, um, right now, it's not really, in the state that it's in, it's not zoned residential and it's not, it's not used for residential, it's not used for, uh, really commercial purposes, and so it would be kind of tough. If it's on the residential side, it's higher, um, around twelve fifty, based on the local area.
Can I interject for a second?
Sure.
We own the land, so what is the value of the land to lease, not the train car?
Yeah, the value of the land is what we're talking about.
To lease the land for five hundred dollars?
Yes, improved lot with, um, with plumbing, electric and, um, um, parking and, yeah, that's, you can put a, put a nice house on there.
Could, I, I would think that five hundred is low.
Five hundred is low, um, it's at the low end, but it's not on the, it's not.
I rent a garage with electric only for five hundred dollars a month, so, and it's a fraction of the size of this piece of property.
Yeah.
It's a building. It is a building, but it's a block building with nothing in it, so it's, it's not much.
But it, but a, uh, a, um, an improved lot at any of the trailer parks is gonna cost you eight hundred bucks a month, nine hundred bucks a month, and you still gotta provide your own trailer.
Yes, uh, in a trailer park, though, you do get other services. Yeah, split. Stop trying to sell the value on this, this is a very.
Some very unique scenario.
Yeah.
Well, I think one thing is certain is that the, the residents of this borough are basically being cheated out of money right now. I don't think that's an overstatement. So regardless of what the magic number is, we've, we've got an organization that's not been willing to negotiate with faith in my opinion on a reasonable lease amount for the use of fairly valuable property. So five hundred to twelve fifty, again, is a, is a large swing, but I don't think that even at the low end, five hundred is an unreasonable amount of money for six parking spaces and the land that the train cars sit on.
We did offer an initial lease amount of three hundred per month, back when we initially approached them in March.
Which I will say for the record, I think is way too low, given the market.
I'd like to see them buy it from us and get, get us out from underneath it. They're, they're a staple in the community. We should be able to come to an agreement. I've had conversations with the executive director and the president of the organization, and they're open to having a conversation with us. They'd like to put together a couple of us and a couple of them to sit down and chat. We can see that happen, see if we can put something together. If we can't, we can't. I think it's possible.
Sort of a value of fifty-four thousand, two hundred dollars at, uh, a rental rate of twelve hundred and fifty dollars, payback is in three point six years.
Fifty-four thousand for the entire property, divide that from three.
Eighteen thousand, so if we do that, it's even lower. So let's just say eighteen thousand divided by twelve fifty at twelve months, we're talking about one point two years payback, and I don't know that that's, I don't, I don't know that that's a reasonable financial decision. I mean, why would we sell it for one point two years worth of, of rental? I don't know. Do we have others that we think would rent the property?
No one's approaching me.
We'd have to rezone that, correct, to be able to have anyone rent that, because it's not technically commercial or residential.
It's not technically any, but a parking lot, um.
So how are they inhabiting space in the first place?
Because they've been there since nineteen seventy-six.
That's fair, it's an old, it's an old earth. Sounds like there are multiple issues.
Can we form a subcommittee and say, get that under the box?
Going to recommend that we're gonna form a subcommittee to determine the appropriate next steps.
I'll leave the ball to the other.
Do you have anything else?
We have nothing other than I stopped at the pool the other day, and I just wanted to say, everybody was so nice and the pool looks great. The kitchen is very sparse. Oh my goodness. Uh, but the, the ground looked good, the people that were there were happy, the equipment was working well. I think we had a good year this year. I don't see anybody who's directly, um, involved in the pool sitting in the audience, but it was nice to see, nice to talk to them.
So, um, Coach Blue Mac, who is the coach for MSC, posted on Facebook, the difference a year makes and the pool last year on Labor Day, which was green and full of leaves, and the pool this year on Labor Day that was full of people. And so, you know, we, thanks to MSC, for the parents of the MSC swimmers who stepped up to volunteer their time as lifeguards and, you know, that we were able to keep the pool open for an extended period of time without, without adult lifeguards. It, it can't be done because the kids go back to school and college and.
I heard the most amount of compliments about the pool being open and also a lot of compliments about the snack bar when they were open. We really enjoyed that.
Good.
So it was a great full year. Make sure you let them all know how excited we were to see them open for extended amount of time.
I can attest to the snack bar was good.
Anything else? Public work and safety, Councilman Booker.
Oh, we have one item, um, on the regular agenda this evening, which is an announcement from PennDOT on speed limits.
Yes, uh, I have a letter here I'd like to read very briefly. Um, dear Lane Thompson, this is in response to your email dated July sixth, twenty twenty-three, requesting a reduction in the existing speed limit at subject location. PennDOT conducted engineering and traffic studies in accordance with sixty-seven PA code, section two twelve dot one oh eight. Analysis of roadway geometry, crash data, site distance, roadside development, speed data and traffic volume were elements concerned in the studies. The results of our recent study, our recent speed study indicate a change in the existing thirty-five mile per hour speed limit is justified. Your new speed limit will be permitted for twenty-five miles per hour. The segment that this refers to is Main Street from one end to the other. So from Norway all the way over to Simpson will now be twenty-five miles per hour. Uh, effective just as soon as we can install the signs and then the chief's got a, uh, uh, some your speed is signs that are gonna go out for the, a little change period, but, uh, yeah, so, um, we applied for a, for a speed analysis and came back and the whole, the whole road's gonna be twenty-five all the way through the borough. So just an announcement.
Excellent.
That is outstanding. Very good.
Mm-hmm. Great for safety.
We also lobbied our local representatives for that as well. I'm not sure what hand they played in that, but it was very welcome news to, to have that for, next for, for the borough. We've been, we've been wanting it for a long time.
Any other public work and safety items?
Thank you, Councilman Booker. Um, it, the last couple of months, it has come to my attention that there. Thank you, Councilman Booker. The last couple of months, it has come to my attention that there's been some matters within the community that I feel that council hasn't been apprised upon. So I'm wondering if we can come up with some kind of policy in your committee to talk about and maybe criminal stuff, like when the school was broken into, I felt not apprised of the situation, not sure like where we follow in that or if there's any other like high incident things, because social media takes off pretty wild and I feel not available to answer with authority, with no comment. But I have been getting some mixed reactions from community members to say, well, I called and this is the answer I got and I didn't even know it happened. So maybe if we could talk just a little bit about if something's happening, the chain of command, the flow of communication to us, just so we can be apprised of things. That's something that we could talk about together in public safety.
We're already doing it.
We're not getting the information.
With the school thing, social media had it right away.
Yeah.
And I actually talked to someone from Penn live, so I mean, information needs to get out.
I, I am not saying that the information isn't coming from you guys. I just feel unprepared as elected officials sometimes when things happen and I have no clue that they've happened within the borough. So I don't know if there's a way to have like, you give, you know, our borough manager heads up for us to have a prepared statement for anyone to ask questions. And I know that ongoing investigations were probably limited on what we can say, but it may be nice in the future because I feel like social media just takes off like a wild person and for us to just be informed. And that's up to you guys to decide what information and how we disseminate it. But I just think that we should probably talk about it. I don't know, I don't need the dirty details, I just need.
Yeah, when there's, when there's some, something unusual or something serious, contact the borough manager and the council president. We're always doing some of it.
So then maybe like from that end, like having something about matriculating that information down to us if we need to know about it.
That's all I have for public work and safety.
Property Parks and Recreation Council and what?
Just, though she's not here, I wanted to thank Dee Jemek for her years of service on the rec board. She has been on the rec board for very many years and is looking forward to spending time with her grandchildren, so she has stepped down. But that does leave two open positions, so if anybody has, anybody who's interested in being on the rec board, please let the borough office know. And that's all I really have for Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Personnel committee?
We'll have an executive session.
Any citizens comment? Mr. Stoner's on his way.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, you go ahead. I'd like to comment, personal deposit, very nice paid job that they packed for, that they paid little for the streets, I recommend that. The other part, now I might just say that. They were playing a nice football game. They dumped all those chippings and all that savings off of Washington Street parking lot. It is taking up half the parking lot and the equipment took up another quarter of the parking lot. You got exactly probably twenty or thirty cars parking up parking lot. There was a power of shavings or chippings from the road, about seven foot high, off the parking lot. And it's still there. We have, they had a home game on Friday night. Limited parking, it's present, so it's gonna be a close game. There's gonna be a lot of people there. There was no parking. They were parking out on Heinz Road against Carlisle the other Friday night, so there was no parking up Washington Street. Also, York Street parking, York Street thing. The equipment is taking up over half the parking lot up there for people who are not able to park there too. It might be something you want to tell the people that have the equipment, either breaking stuff out, making it more feasible for people to park. Maybe just spread out those wood shavings and all that so people can park up there on Friday night football game, but it will be cool. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoner. Is that peace?
I think your social media policy is very well founded. A lot of really professional organizations are looking at that kind of thing, and you guys are all in a headway of that. So I think all our citizens are happy that you're doing that. By the same token, I was impressed with Sarah making her comment about the social media and how the borough needs to be, the borough leadership here needs to be informed about certain things that are going on. Social media is a, maybe a wildfire. I've seen it happen on, right here about what's going on in the borough and I, I've come to all the meetings. So, you know, I can direct them, go look at the minutes, go, and I do that, but that might not be your progress. You may want to look at that because if they feel that it isn't their position to answer those questions, not answering questions causes people who do social media to believe that you're doing something wrong. And that's not true. You're all trying to do your thing. And they don't hear your meetings here, they don't see the, all the work that you're putting in to develop that. It's important to know that because it can cause you problems. A big example I had is when we put up that the yard sale, you had to get a license. And like, it was crazy. And it wasn't your problem, it wasn't that the pay for anything, it was online. Once they knew what they needed to do, it sounded like no problem, but that was the conversation. It was a conversation we shared. It all lessened, and that's what I want to see from you guys, please, no front. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens comment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is the proper time to do it. My name is Ed Wiger and I live in eleven twenty-three Baldwin Street. I've lived there for over fifty years. I've lived in the borough for over fifty years. And my home and property have needed a lot of maintenance over the years, most recently unfortunately my storage system. But the point that I have today is the condition of the streets in the borough and the town are completely made in market sense that I think the street condition is tolerable. And I've heard rumors that something is gonna be done on that path. I don't know what that is, however. And I think if we can't get the street saved incrementally, that we ought to at least patch the potholes. It seems like the pothole program has gone by the wayside. A lot of streets with potholes and I've called some of them in, but, you know, two months have gone by, nothing, nothing has happened. That's all I wanted to bring up today, is if someone replies, what's the status of the road system there?
Yes, we will, we will absolutely update you on what, what the program is. So if you give your information to the borough manager.
I have Mr. Wiger's contact information.
We have your contact information, we'll be in touch. Any other public comments? Hearing none, moving on to other business.
Yes, I want to highlight that this is Suicide Awareness Month and recently the nine eight eight emergency number has been put into service just for awareness for everyone. And with that, Daybreak Church in Upper Allen Township will be hosting a mental health fair with other agencies, including county and other nonprofits and just one of those areas that the county has deemed, the county citizens have deemed is something very important that they want tax dollars to go towards. So just wanted to take the occasion of my time to highlight that and make everyone aware of it.
What time is it?
From ten to two, the Saturday at Daybreak Church.
Just a reminder that we are working on mugs and music October seventh. The information will be on the downtown mechanics for partnership website, so check it out. We have some big bands booked. The Rivers Band will be there, which is a pretty exciting opportunity to come down and listen to some really great music. So hope to see you guys there.
Three quick things. Number one, do we have a, just a quick question. Do we have a street naming notice on the website yet?
We put a few out. The current paper is off for the next planned two to three weeks and then should be back and we'll put another notice out.
I don't see it on the website.
No, it's on, it's on Facebook?
Well, I saw it on social media. I don't know if it would help, because it is a big issue. Maybe have it on the website too, just for thought. Allen Street looks awesome. Instead of a demilitarized zone, you can actually drive from one end to the other without needing to purchase a new car. So thank you very much to all those. Greg, thank you. That's fantastic. And then I was curious, we had a PC meeting where we had an applicant to come before council, and I saw that you wanted to meet, I think you were off at that time, right? We had, we had the comprehensive plan, but we didn't have the applicant to come before council.
Right.
Oh. Got it. No, don't be, I missed that.
And then we also have an additional member, additional community member who is going before the planning commission at the next meeting to be in the meeting, so we'll take care of all the appointments and then go up and then.
That'll be, that'll be very much, very much needed and the applicant's what we'll judge. Thank you.
I do have one thing. Received a letter today from the Department of Justice, Federal Bureau of Investigations, which is a bad start off, but what it is, is Lieutenant Curtis has been accepted to the two hundred and eighty eighth session of the FBI National Academy. So the SAC, oh, ASAC from Washington wrote me a letter, said he's allowed to come, so he's going. My class starts the twenty fourth of September and will be over December seventh.
Was this the program like pre-COVID that he was accepted to? Feels like we talked about this forever ago.
It is forever, kind of a process, but he's probably the first one from this department that attended that particular class and it's supposedly very, very, very good. It has a physical portion of it, shooting, I think, and then the classroom sessions.
Where we live, somewhere out in the country.
Yeah, it's in Portland.
Does that mean that he's gonna be leaving the Kexport to join the FBI?
I doubt it. I think he's comfortable with it right now, but I just wanted, like, you know, since we have been talking about it for a long time, he is now official. He, he got it.
That's great.
That's all I have.
We are adjourned to an executive session.